Think it would probably be appropriate to call this meeting to order seeing as my clock just turned 6:02. So let's call this meeting of the Penn Valley Municipal Advisory Council to order this July 15th, 2021. We will kick this thing off with a roll call. Start from the top of the list here. Ryan Everson is knocking things over on his desk. Ryan Everson is present. Rob Tribble.
Present.
Teresa Dietrich. No Teresa yet. Okay, we will move on to Doug Moon.
Present.
Rick Noly.
Present.
Bob Winters.
Yo.
Okay, there we go. So we're just missing Teresa. I will keep an eye out for her as we move on. Okay, let's move on to the Pledge of Allegiance. I will lead this one. Got my flag in the background. I'll get out of the way here. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item number two is the Consent Agenda. All matters listed under the Consent Agenda are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of the PB MAC audience or staff requests a specific item to be removed from the Consent Agenda for separate action. Any item removed will be considered after the motion to approve the Consent Agenda. Item A is the approval of the meeting agenda for tonight. That is July 15th, 2021. And item B is the approval of the meeting minutes for our last meeting, June 17th, 2021. Entertained a motion to approve?
And we approve.
Second over. We are approved. Moving on. To item number three is public time for public comment. This time is set aside for persons wishing to address the Penn Valley MAC on any matter of interest that is not on the agenda. Members of the public can provide general comments on items that are of interest to the public and are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board or on a particular agenda item via chat through Zoom or by phone during the meeting using the information provided. Action will not be taken at this meeting on citizen comments. The Penn Valley MAC, however, after hearing from interested citizens, may place items on a future agenda, so proper notice may be given to all interested parties. This meeting is being recorded and will be made available to the public through the county's website at MindofVattacounty.com. I just wanted to reiterate, Sarah and I were just talking about that in the chat. This is being recorded and this video will be available for later viewing. This seems like it may be of a bit of interest to those who are here, maybe for a second viewing or even for passing along to friends and family. So it will be available at MindofVattacounty.com and there will be a YouTube link. I think Sarah said she will post it to the Penn Valley MAC webpage. Yes, she did. So you can look for that too. So that being said, any public comment? I see Diana. I see your hand up. We just start with you.
Sure. Hi, everyone. Good evening. My name is Diana Gamzan and I just wanted to introduce myself to the Penn Valley MAC. I'm the Executive Director of the Nevada County Cannabis Alliance and we are a trade association that was founded here in Nevada City in 2016 and we represent the legal cannabis industry here through education and policy initiatives. We have over 200 members and over 90% of all legal local cannabis businesses are members of the alliance. So I just wanted to introduce myself, let everyone know that we are a resource, that we are here to connect. So let's open up some dialogue and I will put my contact information in the chat. Does that work if anyone would like to reach out? And thank you very much.
Thank you, Diana. And yes, that your contact info in the chat would be excellent. That would be a great resource. Any other public comments? Okay, I don't want to outrun my coverage here, but I think I see none. So with that, we will move on to item number four. The ad hoc subcommittees that we have going, we've got one for the broadband and we've got one for marketing this here MAC. We could start with the broadband ad hoc subcommittee. Sarah, do you want to talk on that or should I send it over to Rob?
If Teresa's on yet, I don't see Teresa. And so it ended up being just me and Teresa again. And so we covered a little bit of both topics. Teresa has a number of folks that she knows in various parts of Penn Valley. I'm sorry, just let me back up. I'm talking about the marketing part right now. So for those of you on the call who don't know, the marketing subcommittee's job is to basically get more folks in the Penn Valley area involved in the MAC and to just try to figure out how to do that and to make people aware of the issues that we're discussing. So anyway, Teresa knew a few folks who were potentially interested in serving on the MAC and so she connected some of them with me and others I'm still waiting to hear from. I think we have a few folks on tonight who are either recent applicants or interested in applying. And let's see. And then on the broadband topic, so for those of you who don't know, oh, sorry, Doug, you want to chime in?
Yes, can I chime in on the publicity part, please?
Yeah.
Due to persistence, a lot of persistence, I was able to contact the president of the Video Production Club here in who does all the video production for Channel 95. His name is John Weeks. Finally got ahold of somebody who returned my call. And apparently Channel 95 has basically been shut down due to COVID for the last 16, 17 months. They're starting up their programming and I talked to him about what we wanted to do as far as having interview with Supervisor Hook and Chairperson Wilson to get the word out about the MAC in Lake Wildwood. He sounded very enthusiastic about it. He sent me a program request form, which we need to fill out and send back to him. And then from that point, once that's approved, then he didn't say any problem with that. They have an interviewer. His name is Dick Fay, who has done a lot of interviews on Channel 95. And then he would be the one that would be worth with to set up the interview for Supervisor Hook and Chairperson Everson. He also indicated that once the recording is done, they do not only show it on Channel 95, they post it as a recording on the Lake Wildwood website and they also put out a message on Nextdoor with a link to the recording. So he emailed me the form today. So I don't know how we want to proceed with this or if we want to proceed, but I do have the video request form. So if maybe I could use some advice on who this might go to. I could forward it to you, Sarah, if you want me to. And if you could fill it out or Ryan can fill it out and then get it back to John. And then that kind of gets the ball rolling. So they are getting the production stuff back up. And so anyway, I was finally able to make contact and got the information. So.
Thank you, Doug. That's great. Yeah, I'm glad to help coordinate Supervisor Hook's schedule with regard to that too.
Okay, so I will forward your, his email to you and Ryan.
Great. Okay.
You guys can look at it and decide who fills it out. And the process is you actually print it out, fill it out, and then you can email it back to him. And then he'll take it to the committee that approves it and they go forward from there.
Okay, great. Thank you, Doug. And then so for the rest of you, we also have a broadband subcommittee that has been investigating the topic of expanding, helping to expand broadband in Penn Valley. And to be clear, what I mean by that is advising the Board of Supervisors on how they can help expand broadband in Penn Valley. Because the mission of this group really is to generate recommendations for the board. That is kind of the extent of this group's action items that it can do. So we've, we've talked to a few different broadband providers just to try to get a sense of, you know, what obstacles they're facing, what opportunities they see. And so Teresa and I, who I see is on now, we brainstormed about kind of where to go next on that. And we thought it would be interesting to get a presentation from Starlink. So I'm looking into that. I haven't, haven't made a lot of progress. And Teresa, I'll circle back with you behind the scenes. I think we might end up wanting to reach out to the person that you had told me was like an expert on it. Teresa, do you have anything else to add to that? We're doing the like ad hoc subcommittee report out.
No, I just think that Starlink is going to provide some options for people that can't get connected otherwise. So I do think that's a wise thing. So I will send you Steve Medina's information.
Yeah, thank you.
I would encourage every one of the possible vendors just to make the presentation here and so that we can try and understand what's good, what's not good, what's in the way, what's working. So that we can do a better job of essentially advising. I think there's a lot to be said and a lot to be done. It's important. So Sarah, you had sort of had a list of possible vendors. So I guess we could start going down the vendor list and have some show up.
Yeah, exactly. There are a few others for sure that I can reach out to that we haven't spoken to yet. And so yeah, let me see how I can make headway in terms of that next presentation. I might fall to somebody if somebody's not available. And.
I think it's really, I think it's really important that we listen to the people providing services and especially whatever comments they might have on what makes it easier for them to do their, get the job done. That's, that's basically what the kind of things that I think we need to, to, you know, tell the Board of Supervisors about.
Okay, I think we're done there, Ryan?
Yeah, sorry. I was trying to unmute myself, but it just wasn't having it. I was gonna say, I, I would tend to agree with, with Rob that it was, it would, there would be some value in hearing from the other vendors. There's more than one way to skin a cat. I'm sure there's more than one way to deliver high-speed internet. It'd be interesting to, to hear somebody else's approach, see if somebody's got some, some different idea we haven't heard yet.
We're a very diverse geographically, county. We have different issues about density of population, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So different solutions have different pluses and minuses and we sort of have to, you know, help them all. I get think, you know, find the sweet spot for what they do and, and promote it as much as possible so that people make good decisions about choosing a vendor.
Okay. Was, so is there any other information that anybody wanted to bring regarding the broadband subcommittee? Okay, doesn't seem like it. Not everybody at once. With that, we can move on to any kind of marketing subcommittee information we might have. It, it is pretty clear that, that our, that our marketing subcommittee is pulling, pulling something off, looking at the numbers here. So what does, what can you guys tell me about that?
Well, so we already gave a little, I gave a little bit of that report out saying that, because Teresa and I actually kind of combined that meeting into one because it was just the two of us. And so we, we talked about like recruiting new MAC members and we do have, I think, two or three new applications now from, from new folks. And then Teresa did a ton of outreach for this meeting and I also did a late night blitz of outreach last night. So and what else did we talk about? Well, then Doug reported on the potential interview on Channel 95. And then Teresa, I'm sorry, couldn't support you in any Facebook marketing this week. I was just too slammed. I bet you did a bunch though.
So I'll say that, you know, in the normal places, Penn Valley Crime Watch, et cetera.
Great, great, great.
Okay, well then, yeah, barring any other, any other chatter about the subcommittee. If nobody opposes, we can move on to item number five and get into the meat of this, get, get the crowd all worked up. Item number five is an update on the state of wells in Penn Valley groundwater and how, how much or how little there may or may not be. And with us, we have Jerry Murphy from Peters Drilling and Pump Service in Grass Valley to give us an informational presentation. And with that, I will hand it over to Jerry.
How you all doing today?
Excellent. Thank you for being here, Jerry.
Can you hear me? Yep.
Yes, sir.
Know a few of you recognize a few of the names on here. See a few people that I've known for many years here. But on the wells, it's, it's, you know, we're, we're in a drought this year that's similar to the one we had back in 1976, 1977 was the worst, worst drought, I believe, in Nevada County history that on record in Nevada County history. And this is second to that, very close second. And it's, and we're having the same types of problems that we had back in 1976 and 1977. Is, is some of the shallower wells are the ones that, that are affected first. And I'm talking wells that are, you know, 40 feet, 50 feet deep to 80 feet deep. They're, they're, it's water that runs on top of the hard rock. What we would call kind of confined aquifers, very small confined aquifers. And the volcanic layers that going up by the Five Mile House, that Five Mile Ridge, all of the volcanic stuff is, has always been. The wells are, the production of those wells have always been directly related to the amount of snowfall and rainfall we have. So it's what we would call local recharge. But most of the well, most of the wells in Nevada County come out of, out of the granite structure or the black shale or what we call Brown's Valley Greenstone. And that water comes from, there's all different theories of where that comes from, but it, it is not affected as much by a year-to-year basis on what happened the previous year or the previous year before that. It could be seven years ago, we had a drought and it's taken that long for water to travel underground. And we could have two really good years of rain in a row and all of a sudden we have wells that are, you know, we're still, we're still deepening wells. But when we look at the, when we look at the numbers and I, and I spent some time, oh, probably seven or eight years ago during a drought and I did it again today where I, where I looked at all the numbers of how many, the percentage of wells I deepen every year. And, and so in 2018, it was 10%. In 2019, it was 10%. In 2020, these, it was 8.14%. And in 2021, it's 11.1%. So that's a percentage of my work. So I don't, you know, we don't see, we don't see this huge increase of wells that we're deepening. It, it always seems to be that 10% plus or minus 1%. And I could go back years and years and years and it's going to be within 1% of that 10%. The number that we, that we deepen wells every year. That's just the wells that, that we drill in a four-county area that I'm, that I'm using. I'm not going through the county site. They could probably pull numbers, Trinity or somebody like that, they could pull all of the well deepenings they're getting compared on a, on a yearly basis. But I think it would be very close to that percentage because we drill a large percentage of the wells in Nevada County. I do, the difference is, what's going on now is we have a lot more straws in the ground than we've ever had before. And we continue to put more straws in the ground. And we have a lot of the wells that would normally, usually the bulk of the wells that we would be drilling would be for domestic use where they are, they're domestic wells. So you're, you're drawing out of a domestic well somewhere between 300 and 500 gallons a day out of a domestic well for household use. You know, that's, that's your lawn, that's washing your car, your, your washing machine, you know, clothes, all that type of stuff, dishwasher. And, and if you, it, it's actually closer to 200 and something for most people because there's a lot of retired people in Nevada County and they're, they're a lot more conservative with their water. But, but if you look at, if you look at it, you know, a number that you're going to get off the internet or something like that, they pegged it at about 400 gallons per household. And a lot of these wells nowadays that are being drilled are being drilled for ag purposes. And they, they're drawing, you know, 10,000 gallons a day or 11,000 or 12,000 gallons a day out of these wells that they're, that, that are, are not really designed to pump that kind of water. I mean, for ag use in this county, it's always been surface water, NID surface water is what has always been, you know, for the bulk of the, of the ag industry in Nevada County, it's been surface water, NID raw water. That's what it's piped here for. So I don't know what that's going to do to the numbers in, in a long-term effect. We just don't, we just don't know. Right now, we don't see any, anything drastic. You know, as far as the numbers of amount of wells that we're deepening or the amount of wells that we have to replace. I don't see a, a huge uptick. What, what I do see is the problem, the traffic jam is, is that, is that the, the amount of wells that we have to drill is, is, is just gone out of sight. And, and what's happened is, is CARB, the Airborne Resources started about 25 years ago with these clean engines. And they gave, they gave everybody, you know, 20 years to, to clean up their engines, to buy newer equipment, to have cleaner engines and all of that type of stuff. And a lot of companies decided, I'm not going to do that. And, and so they got to a point where they got put out of business. So you have, you have 50% of the drillers gone that aren't in the industry to cover the amount of wells being drilled in Nevada County, Placer County, Yuba County and Butte County. So you've taken that and then out of the 50% of the drillers that spent literally millions of dollars to comply with the state of California, their fleets are down 50%. Because they had to sell, like us, we had six drill rigs at one time. Well, you can't take, the, the newer rigs that comply, these, these tier four engines are extremely expensive. So to comply, we had to sell two rigs to get one, two rigs to get one, two rigs to get one. So we have three, three pieces of equipment instead of six. So you, you've taken the amount of people in the industry that can handle this load and that's why there's this backup all through the whole state of California. You, you see, oh, well, drillers are nine months to a year behind. Yeah, well, there's only 50% of us left, if, if that. And so that's what's creating a problem on the wells that do go dry is the, usually, you know, a, a few years ago, someone calls with a dry well, usually within two weeks, we can, we can be in there and we can remedy the situation, maybe a month on a really a busy year. And now we just don't have the, we just don't have the equipment to do that. We're, we're just so backed up. We're, we're months behind on, on getting to houses that are, are, that do come up against that 10% that come up against a well that has slowed way down or has just quit producing altogether. So if there's any questions, I'd be, I hope that makes sense to you. I don't.
Are you seeing any issues with water quality from the drought?
Water quality, water quality, yes. As you start pumping, as you start pumping wells down, if wells slow down a little bit and your static level's changing your well. So if you have a well, let's say that's 300 feet deep and on a normal year, your static level is around 60 feet and, and your, your static level varies between 80 feet and 60 feet when you're doing normal household chores and you're rotting your garden or whatever you've got, your, your lawn or flower beds, but it's, 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 it has a fluctuation. And when static levels go down and all of a sudden, instead of an 80-foot static level, when your pump turns on, your static level is dropping maybe down to 180 feet. Well, you're drawing oxygen into the well. And when that oxygen goes into the well and in the hard rock structure, it oxidizes the iron, it oxidizes the manganese. You, you get more calcium buildup in the water. So is, is that, is it draws a water level, I don't know if you can see, but if it draws the water level down in the well when the water level comes back up in the well at night, it picks up the iron, the manganese, that type of stuff. So our filtration guy has been pulling his hair out, trying to, the guy that, you know, trying to recalibrate the system so that they're pulling more iron out and that type of stuff. And that's happened, that happens every year to a certain extent from, from May through about June or July. Everything stays pretty static, but then the statics usually start dropping in August or September. And then we have to recalibrate some of these systems for the, to taking the iron out. Recharge in Nevada County normally would be in February. We have, do have pretty good, pretty good statistics on that when the mine was trying to go in. I don't know, last time, 15, 20 years ago, they made, they did a lot of studies and, and the recharge in the hard rock structure was almost, almost too light clockwork at the beginning of February into January, beginning of February is when the static levels would start coming up. You would think it would be different, but that's literally, they had, they had probes in, in hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of wells around Nevada County and, and around the mine. So up around Grass Valley, Nevada City, Greenhorn Road, not Chicago Park, but Cedar Ridge, that, that area there, all the way around the mine. And, and that's a, that's a, I think, a pretty reliable number.
Jerry, can you tell me?
How much does the mine affect the water? If the mine was emptied, I keep on hearing about all this stuff possibly happening, how's that affect people's wells?
I, I honestly don't think anybody knows. The last time we did something like that was up at Siskomgol. And Siskomgol up on the San Juan Ridge, they, they hit a, they were in a shale formation up there. And they hit, they hit a pocket of water up there where they were pumping out something like a million gallons of water a day. And it used the wells two miles away, three miles away. The, the six-inch wells that we had drilled were being used as vents. They, they literally started sucking air because the water was being drowned out of, drawn out of the ground at such a rate that two to three miles away in whole clusters of wells, they were sucking air. So, so that mine was 180 feet deep or 200 feet deep or something like that. I don't remember. It's Siskomgol. You could look it up. It's all clearly recorded. I would think, I think the static level of the mine is somewhere around 300 feet. I think if they pulled out thousands and thousands and hundreds of thousands of gallons, I, they say that it's not going to affect wells. I have a hard time believing, looking at, looking at the history of what has happened up in North San Juan Ridge. I, I think that, I, I don't know that anybody knows the answer to that question. I don't think you'll know until they start pumping the mines out if, if they ever got to that point.
Well, you might have just answered.
I certainly don't know, but I would hedge a bet that it would affect some wells. It did last.
You've, you've sort of answered my, my question, which was going to be, how often would you say you run up against one of these wells that's run dry and it's, it's a result of, I'll call it overuse or excessive use or elevated use from somebody else in the area where somebody in the neighborhood is using up all the water? Is that, is that as prevalent as it seems like it might be?
It's beginning to be. It's beginning to be where we'll go into a neighborhood where there is a lot of agricultural stuff going on, they do not have surface water and the shallower wells in that neighborhood where we are getting calls to deepen them and/or they are hauling water to supplement the water that they aren't getting out of their well. If they can haul water once a month, pick up 4,000 gallons of water and they can keep the rest of it up with the well. You know, they're, they're being creative about it, but yes, that is, that is, I, I think that is going to be a problem and is beginning to be a problem. I, how big of a problem? Once again, this is the first time we've run up against this to this magnitude because of the, we, we, we are, I don't know how many counties allow commercial grows, you know, but on all of our commercial buildings, all of our public wells and commercial wells that we do, all of that water is metered. So they know how much water these places are, are using. When you get in states like Oregon and a lot of other states, you're only, you're limited to a 10-gallon a minute pump in a domestic well to, to, to try to prevent people from overpumping, overpumping wells. We, we are, I've been adamant with, with the people that we're talking to as far as, as far as the ag industry and, and trying to be upfront with them. And and trying to be upfront with them, that, you know, you get a twenty gallon a minute well, you 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 shouldn't pump more than than say between five and ten gallons a minute out of that well in a twenty four hour period. Wells have to have some type of a recharge. And that's, that comes as a figure from the state. The state says twenty five percent to about fifty percent depending on. You know, you'd have to do some really, you'd have to do some well tests and drawdown tests and static tests to to see what the what would actually be whether they would allow you to do twenty five percent or fifty percent. On all of the public wells in Nevada County, it it the the percent of water that they can use out of their well depends on on a well test done. It's a a seventy two hour well test or a some of these well tests go even longer than that. But a seventy two hour test, you can use twenty five percent of that well's total GPM. It is what the state will allow you to use out of that well. So if you did a, if you did a a seven day test and the well holds up, they'll allow you to use fifty percent of that well's total gallons per minute. Is that, is that understandable?
I think so, yeah.
Okay. So the state relates that on public wells, on on commercial wells and public wells.
And so the and the how are commercial and public wells like regulated or or their usage rates monitored?
They haven't. They're all metered.
Oh, they're muted. Okay.
Absolutely. Yeah, they're all metered and they, you know, they have to turn in the numbers on a quarterly basis and and those wells are actually tested for, you know, they usually do some type of a real estate panel. It's a little bit more than that to make sure that they're not bringing in, you know, arsenic and those types of things. It it's a been going on for years and those wells hold up very well.
Are you using analog or or mechanical meters or are we or are we into smart meters on wells now or when we? What kind of meter are we talking about?
No, these are, these are meters, the meters that 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 are installed on those public water systems are just the same ones NID is using. They come up and go through a meter and it has, you read gallons on them. There are some stuff when they were doing the testing for for the mine, they were putting down these probes down into these wells. And the probe could tell, you know, the amount of static pressure above them. They were very I want to say those probes were twelve hundred dollars a piece or something like that. And they had them in and they would send electronically to a database when they were, when they were, they had quite a few of those out for for a long time to monitor the wells that were around Idaho, Maryland, and Brunswick. I don't, I don't remember if those were analog or the other, because I don't know the difference. I probably do, but I I'd have to ask, I'd have to ask Siri.
I guess my my last question for the time being would be, i- is there ever a time when you, i- is drilling deeper always the answer? Or has there ever been a time? Or how often is there a time when you get to somebody's place and their well's dry and you have to tell them, so sorry, no water here? Just not here anymore.
Most of the time, we look at, i- if we're going to deepen a well or or if somebody runs out of water, I go out to your property, you have a well and you say, yeah, my well slowed down to one point three and it's, I I I'm nervous about that. I, first thing I would do is I pull all the well logs that are around you. And if your well's a hundred and fifty feet deep and everybody around you is three hundred and fifty feet deep, I'm just looking at your well and saying, yeah, you're you're, I would deepen your well. But if your well's five hundred feet and everybody else is three hundred and fifty feet deep and they're not having a problem, then we're going to look at that piece of property and probably try to change the geology or, you know, we would look around on the piece of property and look if we could get on the other side of a fault zone. There's dowsing that's involved. Sometimes there's there's some scientific stuff they do now where they do sound waves down in the ground. I haven't seen any of that. It has proven reliable in any way yet. But I'm hoping that someday we can do that. But I haven't seen anything yet, even on big parcels where people spend ten, fifteen thousand dollars to have well sites picked. We're not seeing that they have anything special. I think you could throw a rock and drill where the rock hits and do just as well so far as as far as the technology stuff that that's out there for private water wells. But most of the time, to answer your question, most of the time, we would deepen a well. That is usually our first thought based on the other wells in the area. You know, it it's just a matter of looking at all of the well logs around you. And and then making what we think is, you know, an educated decision on and the most, which which way is the most cost effective.
Does anybody else want to pick Jerry's brain?
I have one more question for the group. As usual, Ryan. Jerry, I'm wondering about water storage, water holding tanks. You know, I mean, I I know that that seems to be a very important issue for fire protection. How do you guys see that in terms of you know, what your services are?
We do a lot of storage tank systems. That's usually, if a well slowed down and it's making a decent amount of water still, but they're, they're, let's say they have a well that used to make seven or eight gallons a minute and it slowed down to three or four. But they they still want to, you know, water a small patch of lawn and they still want to grow a vegetable garden and that type of thing. We'll put in a twenty five hundred gallon tank or a three thousand gallon tank. So that while they're sleeping at night, the tank fills up and then, you know, they can operate in a and and not not notice the loss of water, three gallons a minute, so right around forty five hundred gallons, a little more than forty five hundred gallons a day. They're really only using four or five, but when they were using it, when you're using it on your lawn and your dishwasher, everything at the same time, you can catch up with that three gallons a minute. And so what you're doing is you're just taking that and 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 putting it into a tank and utilizing it a little bit better. The other good thing about storage tanks that we're seeing this year is, is that when a well does slow down, people people can have that buffer in a storage tank. They can get a water truck in there and fill a storage tank. And then it 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 can last them for weeks and weeks along with what their their well is producing. So that they're still flushing toilets, they're still brushing teeth, they're making coffee, very important. And that type of thing. So the storage tanks are, search tanks are, you know, they're important, they're important for fire, but they're also they make a big difference if you get into a crunch and you can get a water truck out there. There's a number of companies now that haul potable water. So you can go into a storage tank and have certified potable water in, you know, into your system. So you're not polluting your whole system.
It does protect your well pump to a certain degree, doesn't it?
Gives a well gives a well a huge break. So if you have a well that's pumped down on a daily basis and 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 you have your tank filled, all of a sudden that well fills up all the way to the top two and it gets to sit there for a few days before that tank gets down far enough to where it calls the well for water again. So it gives a well time to recharge. And sometimes, sometimes a break like that gives a well, makes a big, big difference in a well. One of the biggest, this is a little bit off the subject, but one of the biggest problems with low producing wells, and there's many of them in the county, is 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 when they do run out of water, it it's it's a huge percentage of the time, it's a toilet running in the house. And it'll go through their whole storage tank system. And it goes through their well and then pretty soon they're calling us, my storage tank is empty, my well's not keeping up. And then we get enough water in that storage tank system and check and we, you know, you have a leak. And we usually isolate the house. And then the system pumps up and it pressurizes and doesn't lose any pressure. But the minute you open it into the house, you lose pressure again. So then they start looking and it's almost always the dreaded toilet leak, which is about a gallon and a half a minute. And it can take, you know, if you have a toilet that leaks for two weeks or three weeks, that's a lot of water that you're pulling out of a low producing well. That's actually the, probably we come across that at least two or three times a week this time of year.
Thank you so much for all the wonderful information, Jerry. We really appreciate you.
Sorry, Jerry, I have one more question. And now that we're in the era of PSPS events, are you finding more and more customers are seeking to provide solar power to their well pump? Or is that something that your company would even be involved in?
We do a lot of solar powered pumps, but mostly people are generators with the PSPSs. The solar powered pumps take a a much smaller generator. You can pump six gallons a minute from eight hundred feet with a two thousand watt generator. So that's very, very, very efficient with a solar pump. Whereas with a on on to pump that kind of water with a a conventional pump from that depth, you're talking about a fifty five hundred watt generator or a six thousand watt generator, depending on the brand. And but we, mo- most people go into tanks that have deep wells. And so they're only running a little half horse pump. And so a a a standard generator systems work really well for that. And most people, I I, you know, I think after the last few years, there's a lot of people have generators at their house. When there's a PSP event, I can hear generators firing up all around us. I have one too, but mine's quiet.
That's a Honda.
It is Honda.
Okay, well, does anybody else have anything for Jerry? Okay, well, with that, I think you are off the hook, Jerry. Thank you very much for your presentation. Thanks. Thanks for the information provided. Appreciate it.
Very informative.
Thanks for your time.
Have a great day. If you have any other questions, feel free to contact us.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. So with that, we'll move on to our next subject, item number six, regarding incorporation in Penn Valley. Should Penn Valley incorporate? This actually was a a topic that had come up. What's been bandied about here in Penn Valley for a while. It was something that the MAC heard from tonight's presenter in I'm gonna say maybe it was October of twenty nineteen, give or take, September, October. And we're gonna, we're gonna get back into this. It's been a hot topic lately. Should Penn Valley incorporate? From the local agency formation commission, LAFCO, we're gonna hear from SR Jones. So with that, SR, take it away. But you're muted, SR.
There we go. Can everybody hear me now?
Gotcha.
Nice to see all of you again, for some of you. I'm SR Jones. I'm the executive officer for the Nevada County Local Agency Formation Commission. And LAFCO, for short, is the agency that handles projects such as incorporation. So it's a, incorporation is a pretty significant, big process, complicated. So I'm gonna, I've got a little slideshow I thought I'd show you. And I'll try to go quickly through it. But I want to encourage everyone to speak up, ask questions during the presentation so that, you know, we can answer questions off off the off the slideshow. Much easier to answer people's questions than to just talk. So I think I'll need Sarah to allow me to share my screen.
One second. Yeah, I probably need to make you a co-host. Sorry, okay, here.
Does that work?
Oh, yeah.
Yep, you guys can see it. Excellent. Okay. But wait, isn't on? Okay, there we go. Okay, so LAFCO, LAFCO is, as I said, Local Agency Formation Commission. One of the most interesting projects LAFCO gets involved in is creating new cities and new special districts. LAFCO also does changes to city and district boundaries. Those are called annexations. Every county in California has a LAFCO. It it's an independent agency from the, it's not, it's independent of the county, operates in accordance with the California Government Code. A special section is set up for LAFCO. And it's funded by in thirds, the county is responsible for a third of LAFCO's operational cost. A third is the cities and a third is paid by the districts. So we have a commission that is statutorily designed. There are two county supervisors that are selected by the Board of Supervisors, two city officials that are selected by the cities, what we call the City Selection Committee, two special district representatives who are selected by the in Nevada County, there are twenty four independent special districts who choose the special district representatives. One public member who are, is selected by the other six members of the commission. And then each of those categories has an alternate member. And I wanted to point out that on LAFCO, on on the Local Agency Formation Commission, the members are there to represent the interests of the public as a whole. So not necessarily just the interests of their particular city or district. And our LAFCO in Nevada County, we've got Hardy Bullock, Dan Miller, and Sue Hook are our county members. City members are Ben Aguilar, Aaron Minette, and Jan Zabriski. We have special district members, Ricky Heck. We have a vacancy on our special district member position. And then Rich Johansson is the alternate member for special districts. And then our public member is Josh Sussman. And we have an alternate named Gloria Glenn. So I wanted to point out that creating a new city is, as I said, it's lengthy, it's complicated, it's expensive, and it requires a lot of coordination between the proponents, the county, LAFCO, and the other relevant service agencies. The proponents need to determine exactly which services the new city is going to going to provide and identify the revenues that would be available following incorporation. They have to design a budget that can demonstrate that the city would be, have the long term capability of funding those services. And I've recommended that the, any proponents contract with a qualified municipal financial expert to help design a budget. It's a municipal finance is a complicated subject. And it really, they'd be well advised to find someone to to assist with this process. And as I pointed out, the the whole process is expensive in 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 that the proponents have to pay the LAFCO fees, the staff costs, there are consultant costs that will come into play. There's the the big document here is called a comprehensive fiscal analysis. And that is going to be, the response, the cost of that is going to be the responsibility of the incorporation proponents. There's also going to be environmental review. So it's not unusual for an incorporation to effort to cost more than a hundred thousand dollars.
This is not taxpayer money. This is people proposing to do this.
Exactly. You're right. That would be, that would be the the cost of going through the process. So now, what services is are the, is the new city going to provide? The proponents have to be able to identify those. But I wanted to point out that there are some services that a city has to be able to provide by law. And that's land use and planning and permitting, law enforcement, animal control, public road maintenance. And then they need to be able to fund the general legislative functions, the administrative cost of 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 your new city. Some of those things can be provided by means of contracting with other entities like the county or a private firm to do planning. The town of Truckee is the most recent incorporation we had in Nevada County. And that that was formed in nineteen ninety two. They contracted with the county sheriff for many, many years after incorporation to provide law enforcement. So where do cities get their funding? Well, they get, there would be a a base property tax allocation so that the the city would have a small portion of the property tax that's collected in the area would be provided to the city. But I want to emphasize that it is not by any means the entire amount of property tax that's collected in the area, the county. Uh, the, the, there'll be a small amount that's alloc, that would be allocated to the new city. And the remainder would continue to go to the county, the schools and the special districts. Um, there's a um. calculation that is a statutory, there's, it's a statutory formula. And that's what the comprehensive fiscal analysis would um, would determine. There's also, new cities will get a portion of the sales tax that um. Is charged on retail sales in the specific area of the incorporation, not the entire amount of sales tax, but a portion. Um, cities also get to keep transient occupancy taxes. This is called TOT. It's like lodging. Um, uh, that kind of, you know, if there's any motels or anything that, there's a revenue source there. Um, cities can also receive franchise fees uh for utility um right of ways. And there's other um more complicated revenue sources. Um, there. I, I've been asked whether a city can um increase taxes. Not property taxes. Property taxes, as you all know, are, have to stay at one percent. Um, but a new city can um ask the residents to approve. A higher tax rate or a, a tax rate. Um, it would be a special tax and those. Those requests have to get a two-thirds majority by the voters. So. Kind of difficult to get a special tax approved.
I, I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
If I remember right, that when you do the fin, uh fiscal analysis. That they have to demonstrate that the tax load. On all of the citizens of this new incorporated area, isn't going to be different than it currently is. And that there are some rules, regulations about how much it can increase over time. Is that correct?
I, I'm not sure exactly what you mean, but I think you might be referring to the concept of revenue neutrality. Which is that if you're going to, the, the um amount of revenue. Should be, that the new city will provide or receive from property tax shouldn't be. Um, more than the cost of the services that the county is going to be giving up. So when there's a discrepancy, in other words, if the city is going to have. Far more revenue than the cost of the services that it, that the county won't be providing, there has to be some kind of equalization. And that's, is that maybe what you're thinking about?
Yeah, I, I, I think the concept was. The, that there's some parity between what, what the county's giving up in terms of expenses.
Yes.
Roughly equal to, to what the new entity is gonna have for revenue. In other words, they're giving up ten million bucks. The, the other thing gets ten million bucks, not twenty million bucks or something like that.
Exactly, and I think this is kind of created for areas where you have a high sales tax or high transient occupancy taxes. So you get a new city that's created, it, it, it takes a bunch of the sales tax and the TOT revenues out of the. It would, that were normally going to the county. So. In, in the course of the incorporation effort, you have to do some kind of revenue neutrality payments to equalize. So that the entire county can continue to provide services that.
And, and are there any, are there any translations about how far forward that carries? I mean, is that for the first three years or the first twenty years?
You know, I don't think I know the answer to that question. I, I, off the top of my head, I want to say it's seven, but I um.
Okay.
I'd have to really, you know, study this. Okay, shall we, shall we move along here?
Can I ask you one more quick question?
Yeah.
I mean, my understanding is that like one one thousandth of a cent of property taxes. Stay within the county versus what goes on to the state. So can you give us an idea of what that really is?
You're asking how much, if you have the, the property tax.
So right, so if you had, if your property tax bills were five thousand dollars a year, which is very low. But if, if it was five thousand dollars a year, how much of that stays locally to our county with our county and how much of that moves on to the state? Because a lot of the um, the money that's gonna be coming into the new city would be based on property taxes, right?
Right, um, so a pro, for um, the property tax allocation is. Roughly, I think about twelve percent goes to the county. Uh, probably twenty percent goes to the schools. And then some of it also goes to special districts like Nevada Irrigation District, Penn Valley Fire District, et cetera. Um, and a portion goes to the state.
So, so essentially the city, if we incorporated, the city of Penn Valley would be. Looking at twelve percent of the annual property tax approximately.
No, that's my point. You would not be looking at being able to keep that entire amount of property tax. You would be given, there would be a, a base property tax allocation calculated. Um, based on the cost of the services that were going to be given. That the county was no longer gonna have to provide in the area. So it's really important to understand that property tax coming out of. The new city is not going to um all go to the new city. A lot of it's going to have to stay exactly. You know, basically where it's being allocated now, which is the schools. The districts, particularly NID and um Penn Valley Fire.
Can, can you tell me then? Um, in that case then, is uh. Is, is there, is there projected growth figured into, into this? Is this, a place like Penn Valley is not getting smaller. Um, and especially considering, let's just say, incorporation happens, this, now we're a city. We're gonna continue to grow. So where do these figures, are they reevaluated annually? Is that?
Well, you would, what, what, what I'm suggesting is that the proponents find a um, a municipal. Financial expert to help design. The preliminaries, that, you know, do a financial analysis to understand um what kind of. Revenues would be available. Um, but you have to determine, I mean, a couple of things have to happen first. One is. The, the proponents have to decide exactly what services they're going to provide. In addition to the, the ones that are mandated. They have to be able to identify the cost of those services and that's usually the work of um. There has to be some collaboration with the county to understand, for instance, what's the cost of law enforcement. In the Penn Valley area. So somebody's gonna have to calculate that. You also, as you point out, you've got a growth factor. So you're gonna have to um understand. You know, what the growth rate is in the area and how, how that's going to affect your property tax base. Cause every time, you know. Property tax goes, that can go up two percent a year. But if it sells, then there's a different, you know, that changes the, the rate of increase. So. Um, all of these things are, you know, it's not a back of the envelope calculation. This is the kind of calc. This is a kind of projection that really needs some um expert assistance.
Certainly, it seems like it's a very fluid, almost a, almost a, a living entity. Um, I guess I'm just trying to get. I, I still need a little clarification. Let's, as, say, as, as the place grows and as costs go up and as, as the need for more services uh increases. Um, of course, you're gonna have, as the population grows, your property tax collections are gonna go up. Um, I, I'm not assuming that that's a linear correlation though between property, between your income and your outgoing, between your expenses and your income. Um, so in the event that it costs more money to run Penn Valley. Uh, and the money does, let's say the money doesn't come from the people living within District Four, living within the Penn Valley city limits. Um, does that mean that the slice of the, of the property tax pie gets smaller for everybody else in the county as, as the need goes up for more services? And, and the expenses go up in Penn Valley? Did, am I being clear?
I think you're being clear. I think you're saying like, what if, what if Penn Valley incorporates and then? Ten years down the road. Penn Valley needs more services or if the budget isn't sufficient to keep the city. Uh, no, the city has to, at that point, needs to start making decisions about how it's going to manage its financial life.
Oh, okay.
So, yeah, there, once the base property tax allocation has been established. Through the incorporation process, that's it, you know, it, it will grow. It, there'll be an increment every year, but it doesn't, that base level isn't going to change. It's just gonna grow percentage-wise according, you know, basically according to the um CPI. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it, it does, yeah, yeah. So I guess what, uh, the, the forethought I wasn't having was that in, in the event that in ten years. Uh, the expenses are higher, then, then Penn Valley has to sit down and figure out what they're gonna do with their own budget. Then we could be talking about. A special city tax that needs to be passed.
Correct. Yeah, you got it, you got it.
Perfect.
So SR, if.
That has to be voted on by, by the citizens inside the city limits, right?
Yeah, we're gonna get, yeah, we're gonna get there. We're, we're gonna go, um, yes, act. If you wanna do a, if there's a special tax that the city's going to propose. Either dur, I mean, sometimes a city could, it could be proposed at the time that the whole thing is voted on, the incorporation is voted on. Or if there's a subsequent special tax, it, that can be proposed, but remember, it's a two-thirds. Uh, voter approval that is requ, majority approval that's required. So special taxes are, you know, it's, it's. It takes a lot to get a special tax. You gotta have a, a, a real good base of public support.
So that, this fiscal plan basically establishes the budget for the city. Under, correct? And that has to be approved by both the people not getting the money and the people getting the money, right? Both? I'm assuming.
It, ask, can you ask that again, Mr. Tribble? I don't think I understand.
But what I'm saying is, is you're gonna do a physical plan that basically says, you know, there's gonna be this much money in this budget.
Right.
To me, that budget seems to be. A budget that's gonna be negotiated, the amounts in it are gonna be negotiated by both the people giving up money, like the county. And people within the um administration of the new city. Uh, as to how to spend that money, but the amount of money is pretty much determined uh at the get-go. Is that what I'm hearing?
That's kind of, I, you're, you're right. The revenue, you know, your revenue stream is going to be determined. Through the LAFCO process, through the incorporation process, because there's like a statutory formula for how we determine that. Then it's up to the city council to make the decisions about how much of that funding is gonna go to police, how much of that funding is gonna go for roads? How much of it's going to be allocated to a planning department? Those decisions are the decisions of the city council.
Okay.
And if, and if we had a year where um, like, say, two thousand eight. Where their, their real estate values tank.
Yeah.
That's the wild card, right?
Indeed, and that's, you know, in, yeah, this is where you um often. With, with the Truckee incorporation, I remember, this was many years ago, but they came up with some worst-case scenarios. Um, you know, like what would happen if we had another two thousand eight? Um, and so, you know, the, the new, the proponents should be designing a budget, you know, like a worst-case budget. In addition to the optimistic view. Does that make sense?
Yes, thank you very much for that.
Okay, I'm gonna move along here and uh. We'll talk about how to get this whole process started. Um. The proponents need to decide exactly which areas are gonna be included in the new city and be prepared to um have. A surveyor or an engineer draw up a map and provide a legal description of that territory. The map's really important because you, you can't do the financial analysis until you know exactly what territory is going to be included. In the new city. Um, they need to design a city budget that's going to uh determine the annual cost of services and. As you pointed out, you also need to be able to have like a worst-case scenario so that there's some um options here. There's some flexibility. Um, and this is where, again, I can't say it enough, qualified municipal financial expert to help, help do that. Um, LAFCO is gonna wanna know that the budget for this new city um can project, can, can be. That, that the city can be financially stable. Um, and that's why we want to see a projection for at least seven years. Um, and then early consultation is really critical for the proponents to be talking to um agencies like NID and Penn Valley Fire. Um, county, LAFCO. Also, I think the um, the local organizations like the eight, you know, Wildwood HOA, if you're including. Wildwood in this territory, any of the, you know, the local organizations should be consulted and kept close. You know, this is, this is like, everybody needs to be on board here. Um, questions? Yes?
Everything on this page is being paid during the proponent phase, right?
Correct, correct. You haven't even given the application to LAFCO yet at this point, because there's the big deal. An incorporation can start, can they be, they, it can be initiated by petition. Uh, which is usually twenty-five percent of the registered voters or twenty-five percent of the landowners. You happen to hold twenty-five percent of the property. That doesn't usually happen that way, but twenty-five percent of the registered voters. Um, sometimes uh, an effective agency like the county or NID might pass a resolution to initiate the process. Uh, that's very rare. So most incorporations come with a petition. Um, the proponents need to file what we call a notice of intent to circulate the petition with LAFCO before they start collecting signatures. And this is so that we can make sure that the petition meets the legal standards that are required. Um, the petition needs to also include the map. This is why it's important to get that map, those areas identified. And get the map drawn up. Um, once petition, once signatures have been collected. Then County Elections Department is going to be checking those signatures against the voter database. Questions? I've got a sample I wanna show you. This is um a petition for the incorporation of the town of Olympic Valley. This was um a Placer County incorporation attempt from uh two thousand thirteen. Um. It. I want you to see that, you know, they've got a nice map drawn up here. Um, they have laid out exactly. Uh, what revenue sources there, or what, why are the, what are the reasons for the incorporation? They've um, they've suggested some terms and conditions that would be applicable. Um, they've uh, you know. Given the names of three of the chief proponents who are responsible for circulating the signature, uh circulating these petitions. So um, it's important to work closely with LAFCO during this phase of the process. Make sure that we're. That the petitions are, you know, gonna pass muster, so to speak. Questions about petitions?
And this, this map implies that you specifically know by the. And this, this map implies that you specifically know by the assessor's parcel number what's in the city and what's not in the city, right?
Correct. Yeah.
So you, the, the people will know exactly whether their property's in or out.
Absolutely. Yeah, they have to know. They have to know. Um, okay, so let's say petitions have been drawn up, checked. We've looked at them. They're ready. You guys, somebody's out there collecting, um, signatures. And maybe you meet the minimum. So now you need to come up with the application that's gonna go to LAFCO. Needs to have service plan, which is a list of the new services, um, an initial feasibility review, um, the map and legal description that we talked about. Um, needs to be prepared by a qualified engineer or surveyor, an initial deposit toward LAFCO fees, uh, which is thirty thousand dollars. Um, but I want to caution everybody that the entire cost will exceed that amount and, um, will include the cost of a comprehensive fiscal analysis with a consultant that has been chosen by LAFCO. Um, there's also environmental review, and that cost would be on the applicants as well.
Now, what happens here if you get fifty thousand dollars into this and then you don't have any more money?
The, um, if the, in, if the incorporate, in other words, the incorporation proponents present an application, they, um, can't pay the, pay the continuing cost, then the, um, well, we obviously work with the proponents on this, but if we were way off, I think the, uh, the process would have to end, be terminated. If the
Is it terminated, or is it just held in suspense until they come up with more money?
It would be held in suspense, but not forever.
Yeah.
I think after a year, you're probably looking at having to restart.
Yeah, I got it.
Um, okay, once, once everything's all tied up nice and neat, we've got the petition, we've got the map, we've got the, uh, the initial feasibility study, uh, LAFCO would then start processing. And that means circulating the petition, the proposal to various, uh, local agencies, um, con- contracting with, um, a consultant to do the comprehensive fiscal analysis, um, working with a qualified environmental consultant to, uh, look, develop an environmental review. Um, then LAFCO would review, LAFCO staff would review the proposal, the reports, prepare a report and make recommendations to the commission, uh, for action. And then there's a public hearing, and remember that there's a lot of back and forth here, because there's gonna be negotiations. Um, and sometimes, I'm I'm saying one public hearing, but sometimes there's more than one public hearing. There may be lots of people who wanna be heard about, uh, uh, you know, a project of this magnitude. So, uh, this is kind of the bare bones structure. But once the commission has the opportunity to review the proposal, they're going to listen to public comment and they're going to be able to take action. Um, at, they'll have a public hearing, the commission will, uh, consider all the recommendations, hear testimony from the public, from the involved public agencies. And at that point, the commission can either approve it, they can conditionally approve the proposal, or they can deny the proposal. And they would, if they're going to approve, they would set terms and conditions that will include the effective date of the incorporation, um, whether there needs to be, uh, payments from the new city to the county to achieve revenue neutrality, which we talked about earlier. And, um, if there is a, a need for more funding, you're gonna, the, the, um, election would require, you know, if you would need a special tax in order to be able to fund the city, then that would require a two-thirds vote once it gets to the election phase.
Now, this is still all in the proponent phase, right?
No, no, we're, we're past the proponents' phase, but the proponents have to, have. Once, once we've got the, um, the application has been submitted to LAFCO with the petition, then, um, then we're, we're in the LAFCO phase. And, but I want to emphasize that, that the, um, the cost of this process is really on the applicants, it's on the proponents. So even though LAFCO's, you know, finding, uh, um, you know, contracting with a consultant to do the fiscal analysis, um, that cost is going to be the responsibility of the proponents.
Okay.
Um, after, after the LAFCO hearing, there's a thirty to thirty-five day, um, reconsideration period, and this is basically an appeal period. Um, if it, if, and then there's also a protest hearing. And if, if the proposal survives that, which likely, uh, then there would be a call for an election. And the elections are usually placed on the ballot for the next general election. Um, following, there's, you know, some, um, rigorous timing requirements in election law. Um, if the, uh, as I pointed out, if the incorporation proposal relies on funding from a new special tax, then the vote is gonna have to be a two-thirds majority. Um, if there's a special election, in other words, if the, um, proponents wanna move ahead before the next general election, then the proponents would be required to pay the cost of that special election. And elections can also re, um, include election of the city council members. Um, sometimes i- in the case of the Truckee incorporation many years ago, the proponents wanted to separate those two elections. They wanted the incorporation to be uh, voted on, and then several months later, they had, once the election was successful, then they wanted to call for election of the city council members. So there was like a lag of about six months for that to happen. Um, and there's various reasons for doing that, and we can, when the proponents are ready, we'll, we'll talk, we would talk about all that. Um, and that's kind of the end of my thing, but I want to give you a little bit of background here. Um, these are the last, these are the incorporations that have occurred since two thousand. Um, and you can see there's not a whole lot of them. Um, up in, in two thousand eight, when there was the big, um, you know, the, the big recession came along, there were four cities incorporated in Riverside. Um, Wildomar, Menifee, Eastvale, and Harupa Valley. And unfortunately for those guys, as soon as they've gotten incorporated, the state changed the funding formula for cities. And these four cities were left without a critical p- component of their budgets. So it was kind of touch and go, and I know that Harupa Valley had considered disincorporation. Um, the state stepped in and, um, provided them with that revenue, a, a, a source of revenue that they had, you know, kind of filled, backfilled them. But that's, was only for those four cities. So there have not been any incorporations since two thousand eleven that have been successful. Um, our friends in Placer County did, made an attempt to do an incorporation of Olympic Valley, also known as Squaw Valley. Um, in two thousand thirteen, they, they had got, by two thousand thirteen in September, they'd gotten their petitions certified. They had started, um, doing, the, the application had been submitted to LAFCO. They, uh, LAFCO action had been initiated on the proposal. In, um, May of two thousand fifteen, the comprehensive fiscal analysis had been completed and was released. That caused some, um, disagreements between the LAFCO and the proponents um, about the analysis and the, um, assumptions that the fiscal analysis had reached, uh, which I believe that the comprehensive fiscal analysis had concluded that the city's viability was questionable at that point. So there was a, it became very controversial, as you might imagine. And, um, by December of two thousand fifteen, the proponents had withdrawn their proposal. So they never really did finish, um, this was not a successful incorporation. Sad to say. So, yes?
It seems to me that the map that you decide on very big effect on almost everything downstream. And it also seems that it would be an iterative process where the people determining the map say, well, it's not gonna make it, we need to include this or not include that.
Right.
Go through some sort of iterative process here, and I, I don't really contemplate what I've seen so far, how that's gonna work.
Well, I, I think that a lot of this stuff has to happen before it ever gets to LAFCO. And hopefully before it goes to petition, before you start collecting, um, signatures. So that's why I'm saying, you know, right now, if it's going to start, it's time to identi, you know, identify the areas that would be included in the incorporation and start working with somebody who can help with the municipal financial aspect of it and, you know, provide a sense of how much the services are, you know, what are it gonna be, the cost of the new city, and does it have the means through, um, what it's going to get from property tax, what it's gonna get from sales tax, whether it has the, um, capacity to be a viable city. I mean, you're absolutely right. It all depends on the areas that have been chosen to be included in the new city. That's like the critical, the critical point.
Yeah, it would, it would seem to me that whoever proposes a specific map is gonna do enough work, if you will, to figure out whether or not the voters in that area are interested in or not interested in, uh, doing the incorporation.
Right, and that's why it's important to talk with all the homeowners organizations, um, you know, any any local, um, you know, affiliations and the districts as well. It's, you know, it's really critical that, um, and you guys know your community far better than I do, but it's, you know, it's gotta be, there's gotta be a sense that the, that the entire community wants this to happen, or at least, you know, a critical mass needs to be, um, you know, on board with this whole process.
SR, can you tell me, um, barring any major hiccups or any, any hurdles that need to be got past, uh, what kind of timeframe, just say on average, does this kind of thing take? Is this a two-year process? Is this a five-year process?
I'd say, I don't think it's a five-year process, but it's probably more than two.
Well, this example right here is at least two.
Yeah, right, right. And they didn't even get to actual election.
Right.
Do you, do you have your slides available in print, or can you email them out?
I, I can. Um, I, yeah, I'm happy to send you a P, would you like a PDF instead of PowerPoint?
Yeah.
Okay, um, you wanna send me your, I think that Sarah's got the little chat thing. Maybe you could just put that in there.
I can, yeah, I'll put it in the chat.
Our, how about, Sarah, how about I just send it to you and you distribute?
It's fine. If I, if I still have the latest version of the presentation, I'll just PDF it right now and put it in the chat.
Oh, you, that would be great.
Is that good? Okay, great.
I have another question. The people in this Olympic Valley example.
Yeah.
Whoever funded the studies and, and proposed the incorporation. They, did, was this a donation, or did they get some money back, or is it gone?
It's gone. They spent, um, they, you know, this was all done with, in, you know, donations from the community. I wanted, you know, it was, there needs to be, um, it's interesting because you need to have at least five hundred registered voters in an area that's going to incorporate. That's a, you know, state law. And in Olympic Valley, there are only five hundred and sixty-three registered voters. Cause, you know, you think about Penn, um, uh, Squaw Valley, you know, it's, a lot of it is commercial property. So, um, they didn't, you know, it was a, actually a quite small group of voters, but they were very interested in proceeding. Um, they had issues with the land, you, land use decisions that were being made by the county in the, um, in their valley. Um, most, they were, it, it, you know, it was a fairly well-off community. Um, so they, they did go through this process. The, I know that the comprehensive fiscal analysis cost a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. It was, I was pretty surprised at how expensive it was when I talked to my colleague in Placer. Um, but these things are, can be very expensive. That's why I'm letting everybody know that it's not a, it, it's not a cheap process, and it is a lengthy process, and it's complicated. But we're here, yeah, I don't wanna be discouraging to anybody, but, um, it is, we would, you know, LAFCO wants to help, and we'll, we wanna coordinate, uh, with whoever wants to move forward, if that's the case. But it takes a lot, this is the kind of thing that takes a lot of, uh, coordination and collaboration.
But I think also an important thing here is making sure, uh, before you start spending a lot of money, that first of all, you got the money to spend, that, uh, you have some at least pretty good idea about how the vote will go. Otherwise, you're wasting a lot of money.
Right. Yeah, that's true. Absolutely. Here's my final slide, which just tells you who we are. There's, uh, myself. Uh, we have, uh, a commission clerk, Deborah Gilchrist, and then, um, legal counsel. Uh, commission counsel is Scott Brown, who has offices up here in Grass Valley. Um, and there's our contact information, and I do welcome calls and, um, if, you know, if it's time, when it's time to sit down and talk about the logistics, I'm happy to do it.
Okay, um, well, thank you very much, SR. Before we send you off, I would like to welcome, um, any questions or comments from the public uh, for SR. Um, does anybody, there we go, does anybody have, anybody from the public have anything that they would like to run by SR?
I have a comment that I appreciate her, uh, spending time with us. This is very enlightening. Cause I, I had heard of the LAFCO name, but I had no idea what it did. Now I do. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I saw Glass raising her hand. Yeah, Glass.
Well, first of all, I'm not a very good speaker, but I do get across what I wanna say. And let me tell you, I said this on November the fourth, two thousand and four, in Nevada County. Penn Valley is a unique community. It is sitting on a goldmine. Penn Valley better wake up. I understand what LAFCO is. I don't know how, when she talks or what she does. I have absolutely no schooling whatsoever. All I have is street smarts, and that got me where I'm at. We went through this about two years ago, three years ago, with that lady that did this stuff about, and you guys all passed it. The, uh, Penn Valley, um, area plan and the maps. And I spoke out on those medias. I said, oh my God, she just saved us ten thousand dollars on this plan that we need to incorporate Penn Valley. Oh my God, we just passed everything that all the people in the meeting said that they wanted for Penn Valley. You guys passed it all. You guys passed it all. I'll tell you what, Penn Valley should incorporate. They are unique. They need to run the community their way. They don't need, they can uh get their building permits, they can do all their stuff through Penn Valley. They don't have to go to Nevada County anymore for all of this stuff. I was called by some attorney in Penn Valley, I don't know who she was or what she was, to investigate why there was problems. And I said to this attorney, I don't know what her name is, and I'm sure somebody knows who it is. I said, I think um Teresa was there. I said, um, well, I'll meet with you, but I will not meet with you by myself. I will meet you with a group of people that had a bunch of complaints about Nevada County. They are the hardest people in the world to get a permit. They have no sympathy for the people. I absolutely positively think that if Penn Valley were incorporated, and they set their rules, and they had their own meetings, they got their own uh plan commission, board of it, uh whatever you want to call all this stuff, architectural review board and all these different things. Penn Valley will make it. Trust me. I was involved in the corporation without even knowing what the word corporation meant. I learned that the hard way back in 1941, 42, when Woodside Incorporated. They went through all of this, and the people were worried. They didn't have any money. Woodside now is wealthy, but I'm talking about 1941, when you could buy a piece of property in Woodside, I did, for $5,000 for an acre. Uh huh. And so I'm telling you, I don't understand all this other stuff. I do know that we need to get together. We need to get some meetings together. We need to do some stuff. Because if Penn Valley incorporates, I swear you will be the happiest people in the world. I'm gonna be 90 years old, and I hope I get to live and see this. But I do know that a lot of this stuff was passed that we need, that physical, that, what do you call that report? Feasibility report? Is gonna cost 40 to 50,000 dollars. And then there's gonna be other money that you do. But once you get through this stage, as this LAFCO lady is saying and all of that, the money does come from the state. The state will then pay you the money, and as you incorporate, and as you go through the years, and as you get building permits, and you get things in the community, that money gets paid to the state. And then all of a sudden, I believe, and I firmly really believe Penn Valley needs to do it. They need to just, I don't know how else to say it, but I just I just know that the the plans that that lady drew were over $10,000, and that's what the feasibility report is gonna do. They don't have to do it. We already got the plan. Of what Penn Valley and the area that you people in these meetings picked.
Thanks, Gladys. Does anybody else have anything for SR?
So that that brings a good question up, um Ryan. Sorry, I had to switch computers because my battery died. And the computer's camera isn't working right. So anyways, um SR, can um can the organization trying to incorporate Penn Valley use the area plan mapping and what was already completed as part of their incorporation plan?
Oh, what a good, interesting idea. Um. We eventually, we'd need a real, you know, a a map that could be recorded, but as a starting point. You know, if that's the area you want as your city boundaries, um, there's, that's I think that's a good idea. You'd have some analysis. Um, you have a defined, you need a defined boundary. And uh that might be a good starting point. Just a starting point. I'm not saying that's the only thing you'd need to do, okay?
Okay, so SR, if if um if the group that's trying to incorporate use the map that we have of the Penn Valley city boundaries, that the general plan update map. It does not actually include um Lake Wildwood as part of the city boundary, so we would need to add that in, right? In order to get enough property taxes. I can't imagine how we couldn't have to use Lake Wildwood and Wildwood Heights and Country Heights and some of those bigger subdivisions with the more expensive homes.
Yeah.
Okay.
And yeah, and these, you know, having yeah, when I, when the Truckee incorporation happened, understand that the proponents, they formed like a, um, I think they actually got a nonprofit status. And they worked for men, you know, many, many months on exactly which areas should be included in the new city and you know, running numbers based on what those, what, what the um calculations would be based on those properties. So it's, you know, it's kind of like you want a a group of dedicated volunteers to be the um, the proponents on this and to really do their homework in terms of, you know, are these areas interested? You know, do you have the interest in those areas in being part of the city? It, it's kind of a, as as somebody pointed out, it's an iterative process. You gotta know that folks want to be part of this new city before you can actually make decisions about what the map's gonna look like. And then that's going to lead to the financial um decisions that have to be made.
So a lot of polling needs to happen.
Yeah.
Okay.
And touching base with organizations and homeowners associations, et cetera.
Does that, does that organization that you had in Truckee exist in Penn Valley?
No, no, this was at the time of the Truckee incorporation, or for years, you know, a a year or so leading up to the to the attempt. They formed a small group, and I don't, you know, say there were 20 people involved. And I think they might have become a nonprofit organization. I don't want to um promise you that, because I don't really know.
Okay, but do we have something equivalent to that here in Penn Valley?
Pardon?
Do we have something that effectively is that kind of organization here in Penn Valley?
You'd have to create that organization. I'm I'm recommending that you, that you would try to put that together. Or that the proponents put it together.
Yeah, has that happened? Does anybody know? Okay.
There's, there's nothing official, but there are, there is a group of people, including Gladys, um, who are trying to get the ball rolling on this.
Okay, so then Gladys, did, is there an organization that's being put together? And does it have any commitments to the amount of money that's gonna go toward this?
Yeah, well, we're gonna try to get the $50,000 together. I'm gonna have a fundraiser and um an auction and um whatever you want to call it at my ranch. Uh, and getting people out. We have gone, I have sent notices out to all kinds of people to come to the meetings and find out about it. The ones that I hear about it are the ones that are absolutely frustrated with Nevada County and trying to get permits and do things. And they should be helping the people. We pay their wages, period.
So tell them.
They need to help us, what?
Tell them the fundraiser.
Uh, the fundraiser is eight, is gonna be July the 31st, and you know, it's hopefully that people will come, and I know that when they, when I have anything at the ranch, everybody says, oh, my God, let's go to Gladys's. We'll have nothing but fun there. And you will have fun, but it's a very, very serious thing. And, you know, why do you think Lincoln Incorporated, Incorporated and Roseville and all these other places that incorporate, why did we ever get out of the the 13 states that got out of whatever they got out of back in 1800 and whatever you want to call it? And I never went to school, so I have to listen to TV and listen to you guys. But I will tell you one thing. I fell in love with per, with Penn Valley. I live in Woodside still yet, and it has become one of the most wealthiest places in Penn Valley, but it helps its people. It helps its people. It stays next to its people. And I can't get that in Nevada County. I could tell you stuff right now that my attorney said I could own Nevada County, but I would never do that. I don't believe in that. I believe in fighting for my rights and fighting for the people in Penn Valley here who don't know that they don't have to go through what they're going through. You could run Penn Valley and run it in a beautiful community. It is worth it, worth saving, and I've been saying that for 18 years.
Um, just a quick note, with with regard to the the fundraiser that Gladys is having, I do want to throw out, I ended up on an email list, and I've gotten I I announced it at last month's meeting. Uh, there was, I guess it was rescheduled, the the fundraiser was rescheduled due to the heat wave. Um, I will make sure that everyone on the Mac gets all all for the last email that I got, so that you guys end up on that.
People still aren't getting, still aren't getting emails. I talked to the man across the street for me today, because I got his name by mistake, you know?
Gladys, truth, truth told, I I'm not even sure how I ended up on that list. I'm assuming it was at a previous Mac meeting, maybe a a list was was made there. Um, but I I do know I am getting them, so um I will.
It really needs to get out a lot bigger and better than what it is doing. The guy across the street told me today he never even heard of Mac. And I said, you gotta be kidding. He said, no. I said, well, look it up and get on Mac and tell him you never heard of it, but he's not there, so I guess he just figured all the heck with it. But he is coming to the meeting because he's supporting the, the um, found, the
Incorporation.
Incorporation. Don't, I get nervous and then I can't talk right, but you know what? I do pretty good.
That makes two of us, Gladys.
Yeah, well.
Um, does anybody else have anything for SR? Okay, um, with that, SR, thank you very much for your presentation. Appreciate the information.
Yeah, thank you.
The uh, just as another quick aside, the, if you, if anybody and everybody checked the chat, uh SR's presentation is in there in a PDF format. Sarah sent that out, so thank you very much, Sarah. Thank you, SR.
Thank you all, and um, you know, if I didn't answer questions, I'm very sorry, but just give me a call. I'm happy to talk to anybody about this stuff. Take care. Bye bye.
Thank you. Okay, um, so now, uh, item number seven, we will go and we will hear from Supervisor Hook with an update uh regarding District Four. Supervisor Hook, what say you?
Oh, thanks, Ryan. Good job today, everybody, too, and thanks for everybody being on tonight. Uh, this was an informational um presentation, so that people could have an idea. It wasn't a I mean, the Mac's not looking at setting a opinion one way or the other on incorporation, so um we hope you enjoyed the and learned something from this presentation. Uh, things in the county are going well. We're busy in our district, even trying to get through with this heat wave we've been going through. Um, I'd like to say it was nice. We had three different businesses down here that just qualified for some of the American Rescue funding, so that was exciting, and actually four. There was four from the Penn Valley area, so that was great. Um, if you haven't been down, I don't know, Doug, we should have him update us on the bridge. It looks amazing down at Bridgeport. I'd like to say two, I know, I missed the, and this is like I'm talking to the choir here, fire safety, fire safety, fire safety. We have to keep vigilant in what we're doing, and we've got a lot of people here visiting from out of town. Um, the river crossings are crazy busy, and um I know our patience can get a little bit. Um, I know some days I feel like, really, am I going down here and having to look at this and talk to people? Um, but it's important that we all do that, and I want to show that, shout out. Um, even the county went down and was some of the Yuba River ambassadors here this month, so they did a great job down there, and I know just last week, I think they brought in like 18 bags of garbage from the river down there. It was incredibly saddening for me to think that people um can't pack it in and pack it out. But um we continue to work on that. Um. Trying to think there's, but those are probably the key things right now, just really be safe with fire. No um barbecue, there's, you know, with burquets. A lot of the um Forest Service even put that message out, um, and have new signs up, so no fires. They're still allowing for um gas right at this point, but we just want everyone to be safe. We have this tremendous fire family in this community as lo, as well as our law enforcement that work together. And um, I don't know if you guys all know, but they had a great uh tabletop exercise at Lake Wildwood that was very successful, and um all the agencies came together and they worked with the Lake Wildwood Agency. Everybody learned something from it as far as evacuation goes. Um, go on to online, ready, set, go. We are in the the set portion and go, be ready. So um I just want to remind everybody to check that all out. Um, you'll be learning some more information about the backbone extension. That's gonna be coming from Nevada Irrigation District. That's gonna be important to have some public comment that goes in that. The county doesn't have anything to do with NID, but water is gonna be critical, and if we could ever see fire hydrants that make it into Penn Valley with the new water lines, because that would probably happen next after it got to Lake Wildwood, so that's gonna be a critical um safety and uh health and safety issue for uh the treated water that could come down here, especially in an emergency um with the extra treated water. And um I think that's probably all I have, but um again, I so appreciate everyone's involvement in the Mac, because it really does make a difference. You guys bring your ideas and make recommendations that help me make recommendations to the rest of the board that I work with and my colleagues, so um keep up the great work, and Penn Valley is a unique and wonderful place, and um by being engaged, you get to be a part of making those changes and uh helping develop what we have, when we saw that during our area plan that we got put together, so um, thanks again, and uh appreciate y'all being here.
Thank you very much, Supervisor Hook. Um, okay, we're gonna move on to general announcements, item number eight. Um, and I've actually got a couple that I will throw out, um, just to piggyback real quick on the, on Supervisor Hook's comments about fire safety. I was reading an email that I got from Congressman Doug LaMalfa this morning, not we're not like friends or anything, it's just a newsletter. Um, saying that since January 1st, California has had 142,477 acres burn 4,991 fire or lightning incidents, zero fatalities, which is nice, and 119 structures damaged or destroyed since January 1st. Um, he also made mention um that the Biden Biden administration is placing emphasis on wildland firefighter classification and pay, as well as hazardous fuels reduction. He talks about the CAR Act and the Clear Zones Act, which streamlines and eliminates permitting processes for hazardous fuel reduction around uh power lines and roads. The the real, real hotspots where these fires are starting, so um it's, it's nice to see that there is perhaps some progress being made in the state of California with regards to to fire safety. I just, I was just reading that earlier, and and here we are talking about it. Um, the other announcement I wanted to make is that next month's meeting um, we will be selecting the Chair and Vice Chair for the Penn Valley MAC. We were a little out of rotation since we we had our last uh, our last elections in December, I guess it would be, so we will be uh doing that next month, and I do believe that next month's meeting will be in person. Um, Sarah was saying earlier that we are in talks with uh the Penn Valley Fire Department, rather than Butteraker's Cottage. Or both, like, we're kind of.
I'm gonna weigh the two. We might be able to get the one space for free, and free is great. So um, I'm going to go check that out tomorrow, but um I have already spoken with Nancy at the Butteraker's Cottage, so that is pretty much ready to go as soon as I hit the go button. So uh that should probably be sorted out by like midday tomorrow, and um I will let everybody know.
Okay, so we should be meeting in person next month, so everybody brace yourselves for that. Um, and that's, I think that's all I have right now. Oh, no, you know what? There was one more thing I wanted to throw out, and I should have done it earlier when there was more people here, but anybody, any members of the public who are still here, if you would not mind, and this, it's a, it's a big if, just if you feel comfortable, if you wouldn't mind dropping into the chat um about whereabouts in District Four or or in Nevada County you're at, um, and how you heard about tonight's meeting, um, it would be a little bit of a, we'll just call it market research. It would be valuable, valuable information. Um, we would appreciate it. So that, I think.
Twenty-nine people at one point in time, I saw.
Yeah, I I really should have said something earlier, but you know, I was too busy talking about other stuff. Does anybody else have any, any announcements?
Chair Everson, I just put a couple things in the chat to you. So the Penn Valley Community Foundation is having a fundraiser also. Um, it's called Help Raise the Roos, the Roof, sorry. August 6th at Gladys's Ranch, she generously donated her facility to us. We are trying to build a 10,000 square foot community center in Penn Valley. So that event is August 6th, and it's at Gladys's Ranch. We're gonna have a barbecue. Um, we're gonna have a raffle, like, you know, the the ticker tape one where you put your tickets in the containers. And we are having live music by Reggie Hall, who hasn't been playing locally since COVID, so we're really excited about that. And also, um And also, um, in case anybody's interested, the rodeo grounds is having Jim Canes and ropings going on and the arena is all groomed and ready for people to use their horses. So, and we are having a fall fest there on October 2nd. And maybe the night of the fall fest, we might actually have a rodeo. So a lot of exciting things going on. Thank you.
Thank you, Teresa. Okay, uh, does anybody else have any announcements? Okay, hearing none then. We'll move on and announce our next Penn Valley MAC meeting will be August 19th, 2021 at 6:00, at 6:00 PM. Location to be determined. Keep your eyes and ears peeled. And that brings us to item number 10, adjourning this meeting. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I so move.
Do I hear a second? And with a second, motion carries, we are adjourned. Thank you very much, everyone.
See you, guys.
Thanks, everyone.
Thanks, Sarah.